Call the North Smithfield School Committee meeting of October 19, 2021 to order. Clerk, please follow the roll. President.
Here.
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 Here. If I present, we have a forum. Sort of the pleasure of leaving, please.
I, clerk, would like to introduce the United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice.
So let's, unless there's an objection, I'd like to move to congratulate the North Smithfield cheerleading team for recognition of the Division II state titles, including presentation of certificates provided by the General Assembly and Representative Brian C. Newberry. Mr. Tech?
Well, good evening, and this is still a continuation of last year when we continue coming to the school committee meetings with the success of our programs. And then, obviously, we talked about the challenges that school district and student athletes faced last year during a COVID year. In this case, in cheerleading, we had to move up a division because there weren't enough schools that were participating. And so we moved up technically two divisions, we're Division Four school. So we competed at Division Two in the state championship for competitive cheerleading, and luckily, unfortunately, and I'm very encouraged to say that, we did defend our state title, so they did go back-to-back state championships, so it was a Division Two title. And we want to acknowledge those athletes right now, tonight, with the certifications from Mr. Newberry. So if not, I'll bring up the first three head coaches, Alyssa Hian, Kelsey Azinski, and Valerie Orleena. And then we do have some of our cheerleaders were able to make it tonight, and some are not, but I'll announce their names anyways, and then the coaches will take those certificates for the ones that are not here tonight. So currently not present is Eliana Giglio. Congratulations to her. Next up, we have Abigail Kuna. Is she here today? Might be on her way. We have Rihanna Robidou is here. We have the captain from last year, Olivia Simerall, here tonight. Next two cheerleaders are not present, it's Lola Sky Mendez and Amelia Jackson. Our next cheerleader is Annie Paiva. We have Courtney Toparowski. We have Cassidy Greaves. And our final two that are not here currently are Grace Leplant and Emerson Champagne. So once again, congratulations for the Division Two state champion cheerleaders.
Congratulations again. All right, unless there's an objection, I'd like to move the discussion vote or other action regarding the throwing field to the front of the agenda for an explanation. Then we can open it up to public comment, community comment, and then we can vote on that issue, if that's okay? Motion's made, and second are all in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. So, Mr. Tech, are you back up on this?
I just want to say that Mr. Eddie, the contractor, the designer, he's not on the Zoom right now, because I believe he probably anticipated it was coming later in the agenda. So between Mr. Tech, myself, mostly Mr. Tech, I think he can field any of the questions, and what led to this design, and what it means.
Okay, and if Mr. Eddie gets on, if you could notify us?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I recognize that, obviously, when this discussion is going to come forth tonight, it's a very sensitive topic. It's change, and not all the time it's change easy. We are talking about, obviously, a full redesign of our facilities about four, five years ago, so when the school committee did bring in track and field, we said we would do it in phase. And so we implemented Phase One, which was the run-in events and some of the jump-in events, and that ultimately, the plan was to eventually bring in the full track and field program, varsity program at the high school, along with lacrosse, we did both of those at the same time. And that was going to include the throw-in implementation as well, too, at which time we had to figure out how we would implement that over a course of a few years. So that kind of took place right there, and then everything kind of has stayed very neutral till now, and now we are currently working on upgrading our facilities. So right now, we're currently putting in state-of-the-art track that is going on up there, and a turf field. And at this time, it was deemed that we would do a, basically put out a rendering with architects to design where and if a track and field, throw-in facility could be put on. The first rendering that had come out was going to potentially eliminate the softball field completely. The first rendering that had come from the architects was going to take the whole entire field off, level the dugouts, and have the throwing cages ever to be right where the current field stands right now. Alan did not feel that that was an acceptable plan, nor did I, and we did not want to lose a field. Space is very valuable here in North Smithfield, so we asked the architects to look at it again and see if there was a different alternative solution we could come up with while maintaining that field. So the architects went back and then gave a second rendering of what they feel the throwing facilities could be, which included all the vectors and throwing things that we needed for actual implementation to host meets here, which was one of the goals that was set forth by the committee four years ago. That new rendering does allow for the field to stay. The one and only issue, really, upfront, would be the fence. So there's an outfield fence, what we call the home run fence, basically, where you have the outfield arcus fenced in, and you have a yellow barrier over the top of the safety, and that indicates, obviously, the end of a field, and anything hit over that would be deemed a home run. Years ago, prior to the building of the middle school, North Smithfield had a softball field here, it did not have an outfield fence to it. It was a regulation field, just minus outfield fence. There is no regulations that state you have to have a fence. It's nice, it definitely adds to the game, adds to it, so, but you're not required to have a fence to play. This rendering, if done just as drawn up, would still allow for the field to be utilized at any point, you could still use it for games and practices. Obviously, logistics of planning and coordinating when people would be there, you wouldn't have both programs running simultaneously, but could be done. And given that, obviously, we would want to provide the best for all of our student athletes, there is a way, a potential way, they have options out there, you can purchase, if the committee so choose, portable fencing. They have portable fencing that can actually be put in, that would basically be the exact same thing as the fence we have right now, it has the yellow safety barrier on top of it, and everything, and it streams up, so it would be what you see now, minus the fact is that you can move it. Right now, we obviously have it cemented in and pulled in right now. If you do that, then you allow yourself to have that multipurpose use of the field, which is, again, allowing for both programs to utilize the space to its maximum efficiency. Being as candidly honest as we can up here as well, too, there are other considerations that the committee will have taken into place. One of the big things will be, is, again, is the maintenance of moving that fence in and out. Also, is there a potential for dependent on exactly how the throwing cage gets put in, and once we actually start using throwing implements, is there a potential for, say, a hammer to put a divot into the field? That's kind of unknown at this point, in the sense of, we have to get that kind of real good look at it now to see. But again, you know, something that we want to be upfront about, we wanted to say that this is something that has to be taken into consideration. We would not want to put a bunch of divots out there and then expect the girls softball team to be running and land in a divot. So these are some of the questions in that architectural render, and that will have to be considered in this conversation that will be brought forth by the committee and/or the parents that may want to address that. As a contingency plan, depending on how committee would like to go, currently, I know there is a big upswell in in the town, they're working very diligently to try to build back softball. And I know we have some parents here tonight that have kind of reinvested back into that youth level, and are trying to basically, like a car, they're trying to jump-start it and rebuild and regrow it and energize it from the grassroots, which was absolutely necessary if we're going to ever resume a varsity program back here in this district. So I know that they're very, working very hard at that level right now. Before we had this building built, the middle school softball program used to be bused from the building, and they would practice at Pacheco Park. That's where the middle school softball program originated out of, and at that time, the middle school baseball team would go down to the meadows. Those were the two facilities that would be utilized by that. When we built this building and we had the fields here, our goal, although we've been trying to condense and try to, you know, have kids working on their school facilities. So there is an option there, there's also an option potentially to have varsity games down there. Once again, I know the concern's going to be is, are we jamming everyone into just one field or one space? These, again, just want to point out are, you know, I think some options or some of the points of contention that maybe need to be discussed as we go forward. But I assure you that one of the things in the goal is that I know very strongly that the committee and myself as athletic director are not looking to eliminate softball in any manner whatsoever. We want all programs to be here. Currently, we've just reinvested into a two-year co-op agreement with Barerville to continue softball, which we had done last year. That will ensure, no matter what the numbers will be, that we can play softball. If the numbers grow within the next year or so, and say in the second year of a co-op, you can exit a co-op, you can have the ability to move out of it if you can sustain your own program. The co-op is designed for one reason only, just to ensure the kids can play. That's what it's designed for, but again, if the work goes at the grass levels and we can reach the number where we can be viable, once again, then I would think that everyone in this room would want that to happen. We want the kids playing in their own district. So these are just some of the topics that are discussed that are tied into this whole throwing area and with that field, but I think it just needs to be really stated publicly that there is no desire to eliminate that field in any manner. It was named after a very remarkable man that had the pleasure of working next to. And so that is something that has to be considered, on how do we protect that legacy as well, too. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, and then obviously let parents make their comments as well, too.
Thank you. Does anybody want to address the committee on this issue? So anyone who wants to address the committee, please, you know, one at a time, come up. And I'd ask, you know, just limit your comments as much as you can.
Good evening, dear members of the school committee. My name is Robert Storm. I am a resident, a parent of an eighth-grade softball student athlete, and I am also the head coach for the North Smithfield Middle School Girls Softball Team. It has been brought to my attention of discussion this evening of action involving the removal of fencing to the Pat Dowling Memorial Softball Complex here on school grounds in favor of a throwing area. I am here to voice my opposition to such action based on the following. Removal fencing gives the impression girls varsity and middle school softball is not at all a priority, supported by the school committee, school department, and athletic department. Facilitating bringing varsity girls softball back to prominent standing and maintaining middle school softball is not a priority. Removal fencing opens for, opens potential for complete removal of the entire field altogether, thus pushing softball at the varsity and middle school levels completely off school grounds. Removal of soft, removal of softball off school grounds to a public recreational facility such as Pacheco Park places an undue burden on both school teams and recreation teams, thus creating conflict regarding field usage. Recreation softball has been brought back and is now in full swing with North Smithfield Little League, and should not have to compete for field usage with school athletics, whom already have facilities available to them on school property. Such a conflict could disrupt ongoing efforts in stabilizing potential interest in softball at a recreational level, which in turn will have a direct impact to fielding varsity and middle school softball teams in the future. This lack of availability and interest at the recreational level was detrimental and was evidenced last year by varsity softball being unable to field a team and having to co-op with the Barerville School District. It is my hope the points of opposition stated here today will be considered and referenced prior to any action taken. I believe the school committee can show their commitment and support to bringing varsity girls softball back and to continue and maintain the current status of the middle school girls softball program by not pushing them off the school grounds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, I would just like to start by thanking the committee for giving Mr. Tech the opportunity to explain his side, so we all had level playing ground as we, you know, what the, what the plans were. Mr. Tech, I appreciate that. We've two very passionate people right here, so I appreciate that. We were undergrad together at Rhode Island College, so we know each other very well. Good evening, this evening I'm speaking to the new business agenda item, number one in regards to development of a new area for track and field. It has been brought to our attention that the school softball fence could potentially be removed to create this new throwing area. By doing so, we are also dismantling, possibly dismantling, the Pat Dowling Memorial Softball Field, and also making it unusable, possibly, for practice and games. While it's extremely exciting for the potential of having a throwing area for track and field at the high school, it is also disheartening that the school department would think of dismantling this field to make it happen. You will hear or have heard how this dismantling would affect the whole softball program in the town of North Smithfield, starting at the coach pitch age group level through high school due to field availability. My husband and I are both graduates of North Smithfield High School. While we are both multi-sport athletes in the school system, we also thrive within the town recreation sport leagues. I have amazing memories of competing and supporting fellow players on these fields, the ice, the mats, and the courts. Four years ago, my husband and I moved back into town with our two young children, knowing what this town stood for and supported. We moved to North Smithfield for the education system, as well as the access to sports that this town provides. My point, we are invested in this town and the school system. Currently, I am the vice president of the North Smithfield Little League. Working together with Scott, the president, as well as many other dedicated board members, we are working so hard to rebuild a softball program that once thrived under Pat Dowling at the high school level. We are also working on growing the baseball program here in town. Please know that I'm not just fighting for my daughter, I am not just fighting for the high school girls, I am not just fighting for the middle school girls, I am fighting for every girl in this town that wants to experience a new sport. Some of them are in Lincoln right now, participating against Lincoln themselves in a little league game. I am fighting for the girls that have found their favorite sport, and the girls that want to continue their love of athletics through high school, college, and beyond. By dismantling a dedicated field to make the way for another sport, you are dismantling their access to a sport. I am asking you to please look for all possible alternatives that do not take away from any sport, but work on enhancing what we have here in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emma Gabrielson, I'm a student athlete at North Smithfield High School, participating in tennis, track and field, as well as softball. I've been playing softball for around three years. While my focus in track and field will be the shot put, taking away the fence or field will make an enormous impact in softball here in my town. Taking away this fence, hang on, taking away this fence and using it for track and field can possibly injure some of the assets. By taking away the high school field, you are also limiting softball, the softball community to one field. How would a high school team, a middle school team, as well as potentially 100-plus younger girls, all share one field during the same season? Without softball, it is really hard for me to stay motivated through the day. Throughout softball, I've met some of my closest friends. I've also learned many great life skills, such as grit, determination, and grace. To me, softball is not just some sport, it's my life. By taking this field away, you're not only taking away just softball for the school, but you're also taking the sport of softball away from my town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Mackenzie Storm, and I'm a student athlete here at North Smithfield Middle School. I have been playing softball for about three years now, and it has helped me get through some of my hardest times in life. Losing the field here at school will make practices and games harder for us in the spring. By losing this one field, it leaves us with only one other field to play in here in town. I happen to know that many other teams, such as North Smithfield Little League Softball and other travel organizations in the state, practice and play at the park. Just by adding another team to that field can be a lot to handle. The middle school team practices every day of the week, and that could affect the other teams gratefully, and just the hassle of trying to get a bus to drive us to Pacheco Park every single day right after school cuts down our practice and playing time. We have already lost an immense amount of playing time due to COVID, and we don't want to lose anymore. I have been helping out the little league organization by coaching the younger players. I have also noticed that they are so passionate about the sport, and I don't want them to lose that passion. Softball has given me so mu, so many opportunities, and I thought I would have never gotten if I haven't played the sport, and I want the other girls to have the same opportunities as me as they grow in this sport of softball. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Joe Jalowski, been in town for 16 years.
You can detach that and hold that. That's as high as it will go, all right.
All right. Been in town for 16 years, I've been coaching for 15, I coached a couple of your daughters on the board here. So I'm a little late to the game, sorry, I didn't have anything prepared, so it's kind of out of the cuff. Four years and a quarter, I think I worked for Matt in the athletic department, and coached middle school, basketball, softball. Now, I was going to move up to the high school varsity program, but COVID hit us, so still hoping to get there. I have a couple of questions, I don't understand why the softball field is the place to set this up, was there, was this discussion about that, or am I late to the game on that? Why is the softball field the only place we can put this?
We did have an architect look at the entire facility spacing, and this was pretty much the only place he could fit. So I am right now, again, I think he anticipated being on later, I'm trying to text him to get him on board the Zoom, so he can answer the specific questions about the location and the engineering behind it.
Would it be possible for us to reach out and talk to him in person at some other time?
Well, I'm hoping to get him on tonight.
Okay.
So, and then he'll be, he'll be able to answer these, these specific questions.
Okay. So my second point is the field condition. Obviously, we're worried about the divots, Matt brought that up. I've had to practice out there in that practice area that we have behind the field where the kids throw, and I do know that, that it does cause divots, but, you know, softball kids just, they rebound from that, they, they deal with it. Scheduling seems to be a big issue, because, and it's been brought up already, we've got two, two teams on one field, and we barely are able to run the programs. We, we're, sometimes we're, we're canceling practices or postponing games, rescheduling, scheduling is a nightmare, so now talking about putting a third one in there, I don't see how that's going to be done. This is crazy. The, the last thing I wanted to say was I, I think, I think the track and field kids absolutely deserve a throwing, they, and they absolutely deserve to have home meets. I think the lacrosse and football and soccer, they deserve a place to practice instead of outfield in either boys' baseball or softball, but I'm a big proponent of, you can't improve one team by degrading another team, and I think this would degrade the softball program. And I want to finish by telling you a story. I had, I think it was my third year coaching the middle school team, we had an away game upon against it, and we met, we were met by the athletic director over there upon against it, he directed us to a portion of their field space, that was an open field that we could practice a warm-up for our game. It just happened to be right next to one of these throwing stations, and I was a little nervous that one of my girls might take a stray hammer or javelin while we were warming up, and he assured me that this thing had fences, and it was very safe, and sure enough, on one of the throwers, throw, it missed the net, went flying, and almost killed one of my players, and it was very close and, and very alarming. If you're going to put a throwing apparatus out there and then have kids practicing, I think that is, is very, very dangerous. And I just, I'd like to finish with that. Thank you.
I don't necessarily need to hold it, I'm not quite as tall. Most of what I wanted to say, pretty much, is that, my name is Kristen Ledger, I'm his wife, so I've been involved just as long, we have an older daughter who went through the entire little league, middle school, and high school program here, we have a younger daughter now, who's a junior, both our daughters, softball is their primary sport, they live and breathe it, they play it year-round. And just like it's been mentioned, I absolutely think it's great to be able to provide the facilities for all the sports teams here, but again, if it takes away from one sports team, it's not necessarily as beneficial. Having a fence on that field makes that field a softball field. I realize it's not required, it makes a huge difference when playing the game, and it's something that the girls have, that perhaps other schools don't. The safety is a concern, the divots that could be made on the field. Girls can trip and twist a brainhead ankle, we obviously don't want that to happen, and I think with the scheduling, it will be difficult. I understand you could probably schedule a meet around softball games or practices, but the track and field kids are going to still need to practice and throw the hammer and throw the javelin, and softball does use that field six days a week. If they don't have a game, they practice. I'm still hoping that North Smith, that we will be playing in North Smithfield at the high school this year, with or without a co-op, so if you have those two teams, that field's being used at least five or six days a week. So I thank you for listening to what I have to say, and I am hoping that we can find something perhaps better that does not intrude on the softball field itself. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Scott Savigny, been in the town since 2007. I come to you tonight as president of North Smithfield Little League, also a recreation professional, 20 years in City of Cranston, so I have that background as well. Softball in North Smithfield at the youth level was not in a good place, but the people that just came up and talked, they stepped up, and they are putting a tremendous amount of work in to build up youth sports, to build up youth girls softball in the town. That is going to build up into your middle school, your high school. We currently have, on the boys' side, we have 23 juniors players, 13 to 16, that is your middle school team, that is a foundation for your middle school team and your high school team. We need that foundation for the girls softball, middle school, and high school team. To achieve that, we need as much field space as possible at Pacheco. Moving the middle school over there, I don't think is the solution, particularly in this day and age. In, in a pre-COVID world, you could say, yeah, right after school, 2:30, 3 o'clock, you can get the game started. Right now, we're seeing games started 3:30, 4 o'clock, 4:30, maybe even 5 o'clock, there are lights over in that field. That will have a ripple effect on the youth sports getting onto that field. If you move them over there, and there's only one field, you have the meadows, which is another softball field, we thought we could use the meadows for juniors, and they took the backs, the town took the backstop away, so that is not a So that is not available for the older kids. So Pacheco, it seems to be the place to congregate all of the youth sports. So having the middle school or even the high school move over there, I don't think is the right move. I think it'll have a detrimental impact on youth sports, on our ability to give proper field time to kids of all levels from coach pitch at four, five, six years old instructional, all the way up to our twelve-year-olds and even our junior program. So I would like you to seriously reconsider and I hope to actually see a diagram at some point of what it may look like. Maybe if the architect or the engineer would come on. I think it'd be useful for everyone to be able to actually visualize what it will look like.
Bring it up.
Yeah, I just got an update. Mr. Eddy is at another school committee meeting right now and he'll be joining us in about fifteen, twenty minutes. So I don't know if you want to continue the discussion or if you want to hear other folks.
Yep.
Okay.
I have a lot of questions, so I'm not sure if you want to wait. Could you tell me who the architect, what is the first, my name is Douglas Allen, I'm a parent. Who is the company? You keep saying Mr. Eddy, what company?
Traverse?
Traverse, yes. Yeah, they're actually the company that is doing the work on the track in turf field right now.
Because I know Mr. Tech kept referencing a rendering. To me, a rendering is just a pretty picture. A plan is something you can actually construct. Is there a plan that can be viewed? There's a difference between rendering and a plan. And has there been any published comment on the renderings at all that we missed?
No, well, let me tell you the timetable. And again, we're not trying to force something onto everybody. We were just under a very tight timetable and, you know, so the information is coming out. We just, so here's the thing, we had, we were able to, Alan CP, our facilities director, bring the price down on the construction of the new track in the turf field, which enabled us now to have the funding to do the throwing cage, the expansion of the track and field program. So this came up pretty rapidly because prior to this, the last time we received pricing was about five years ago and it was a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Pricing has continued to increase, however, from the monies that we saved by doing some redesigns on the turf field, which, let me tell you, we didn't scrimp on the turf field and the track. This is state-of-the-art, very professional going in. We were able to generate enough funds to expand the program. Now, that's where we started to run into physical limitation in space. And I know the architects, I know Mr. CP and Mr. Tech, they've walked that, they've brought people in and this is, at this point in time, the best location to put it and turn it into a multipurpose area.
That's based on Traverse and directly.
Right. Now, honestly, I have, no, I'm not gonna say that because it doesn't exist. There were hopes and dreams and plans, which requires time, requires a lot of money, maybe something that happens in the future. No guarantees, but we are severely landlocked and restricted on anything we do with that athletic complex. And to add programs, now we're overlapping space.
Is there a master plan for this facility at all? Because he did mention phases.
Right.
Usually when you mention phases, there's a master plan on what you plan to do over five, ten, fifteen years.
And it's pretty much, the next iteration of the athletic field is to put in the throwing area. Beyond that, we've covered pretty much every sport and then again, we've also have run out of space.
So if I understood it right, the idea was the architect's idea to put it there.
Correct.
Okay. And my next question is why you said there's no other space, there's no other option?
Right, when Mr. Eddy, when he gets on board, if you would like to continue the discussion or hold, you know, he can address some of this.
I would love to see the different options that he did come up with just at some point. And has the town determined the cost to bus students to and from Pacheco daily at the games? I know you said to save your money.
So, yeah, it's not, there's no, we are not asking for the softball field to be moved in any way, shape, or form. It will still be there. We have no interest in reducing or removing the softball field or teams.
But it's gonna be modified.
It's gonna be modified as a multi-use field, just as the football field is used for soccer and other things. Unfortunately, we don't have unlimited resources, we don't have unlimited space. So again, we were looking, in what I say, we, the administration is looking to, what can we do, I guess is the issue, not what can we eliminate. I mean, this committee has been very supportive of all sports programs. You have new equipment, you have new fields, you have new, everybody has new uniforms or at least the last four years they've been rotated. Prior to that, my understanding is they were sixteen years old, you know, things like that. We want to support everything.
I'm not implying you don't support.
No, so how do we do it? I don't know, I mean, I'm not, we don't.
Mr. Eddy just popped on. So.
Is the softball field used for other activities during the day?
So PE classes.
Mr. Tech, let me just ask you something, where are they practicing now, the throw fields?
Throw is, we've been coming down the bottom of the hill. We've also eliminated some of the differences.
Okay.
Okay, it's just, it's just that, because if you do bus them, I have a concern with time. They're gonna lose time going there, they're gonna lose time coming back, completing studies.
We agree with you.
And I just don't know what you thought besides just let's get rid of the fence.
In the fence, as Mr. Tech said, I think anyway, or at least he told me, we have no problem also putting up, you know, the temporary type fence, you did say so, if we need it, but right now, would it even be needed like today? I understand, listen, we'll do anything that we need to do. We're just trying to figure it out. So if you want to have Mr. Eddy speak on it?
Yeah. Mr. Eddy, you're on board? Yep.
Yeah, I'm here.
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay, so again, I'm sorry, I'm jumping from meeting to meeting here. And so my understanding is there's a discussion about the throwing area and the softball field and the outfield fence, is that correct?
Yes.
And the discussion is there's a concern about removing the fence from softball. Correct? And is that the main concern?
There's concerns about usage, having the time for the damage.
Divots in the field from throwing.
Yeah, I mean, again, so by rule, all the way up to the NCAA level, so we'll start with fence. So by rule, all the way up to the NCAA level, fence is required, it's obviously preferred. And there's a wide range to deal with the fence, so it could be temporary, a temporary condition, where you have a temporary fence that you use for home runs, that's one option. The cage, the hammer cage is not in the field, so it's out of play. So there is a little bit of maintenance operations that need to happen from throwing. So it's, you know, the divots from the hammer have to be, you know, kind of filled just like you would, like a divot on a golf course. So, you know, there's some maintenance, a little bit of maintenance that comes up with that. But having kind of throwing and softball or other uses in softball and baseball, multi-use fields is not uncommon, especially on areas and schools that have such tight constraints.
Were there any other locations that were considered, why specifically this spot?
So, one other, I mean, there were two considerations, was we have javelin and we have javelin and the discus hammer, so it's really covering two. Discus hammer, the more damaging being hammer. When we look at the two, the runway for javelin, when we laid it out, we laid it out in the middle of the school, you end up crisscrossing, so you can't throw both at the same time. So it was more of a logistics piece about being able to kind of manage. And I know the intention was to be able to bring track meets to the school. So having separate javelin and separate discus hammer cages, to be able to throw at the same time was a concern. And those are really the two, only two areas where these things can fit. So there's no room, we can't throw on the back. We looked at behind, obviously behind the baseball field, that's a separate tank. When we get to a cage, we can't put a cage on it, we're obviously, it's fenced off. We tried to fit it behind the stadium, we tried to fit it. We actually looked at removing the bleachers to take those out, visitors bleachers, to see if it fits there, it doesn't fit there. So the really only two options that there were, were looking at the area in between the high school and the middle school and the softball field.
And what was the issue with between the high school and the middle school?
Well, there's no issue with the high school and middle school, it's the way the javelin runway works across the softball field by throwing it that way. So again, you have an approach where you're running and then you throw the javelin. So that javelin, when you run across the softball field, you end up crisscrossing across those two. The only way we could fit both and separate them was by pulling the cage all the way back to the corner outside of the third left field, pull that all the way back, turn it, and then be able to fit both sports at the same time. That's why we did it that way.
I do have the drawing that he's referencing. I can bring that up on the screen? That's the one that didn't work. One below that. Okay, and I will share the screen so Mr. Eddy can see it as well. Apologize, I have way too many videos. I apologize, everyone. Just. Okay, Mr. Eddy, can you see the screen now?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the one that doesn't work?
That's the one that's being proposed.
That's the one that's being proposed. And again, that outside is well outside of what a typical thrower would throw. That arc. So when we laid out the javelin in that area, when you, if we twisted that javelin area and we laid it across the softball field, you see we have a runway. And then when we laid that out, you're throwing into that hill across the way. We had a discussion with Alan about holding that hammer discus cage so that we could obviously keep it out of the play of softball. Because at some point, we were working, pulling it in and we had the hammer discus cage inside of what was almost on the line at third base and we kind of pulled that back and got it out of there. So you can still use that field.
Mr. Tech, is there another location that they could practice? That not, that throwers could practice? Yeah, I mean, not on this field at all. So is there another facility in the area? What I was, what I'm just contemplating is that, you know, that we have meets there but that they practice more or less somewhere else. So, I mean, if there's competitive use of the field and we're gonna interfere in the competitive use, is, you know, we don't want to have that. I'm just wondering if there is a separate location that they practice, that throwers practice so that they don't, I mean, you're tying up the softball, obviously, right there. Right. Right, but would we, could we practice, I mean, I'm exaggerating the point, at Boroughville throwing? Right, yeah, maybe that's not. Yeah. Ian, there's no, not that, I know that there was a town facility that doesn't have a, the Meadows? Is that something that we could pay for? Backstop or whatever is missing to help or am I gonna get everybody mad in the room at me? Where's the Meadows? Yeah, well, only because we have the facility there, but.
So I would agree that, you know, again, in best case scenario, that's what we would try to do is find alternative locations to help alleviate the traffic that's gonna be over there. But if we move the throwing area to another place, we could never do a home game.
So if you move the throwing area, you would still now, we run same concept. So for practice, we'd be splitting the track and field team where you'd have to run in here and then you'd be shifting either coaches and players over to another whole facility to be, you know, obviously watched because you couldn't have them go throw in on their own. And then you would eliminate track meets because you would not, you would have to have two separate facilities being coordinated. If, again, if the goal is to ultimately be hosting track meets, you would need the throwing area to pretty much be somewhere pretty much centrally located to where the meet's happening.
Okay.
Do these two always have to be next to each other? Is there any way that you can split them off?
As far as split which up?
So like the hammer from the javelin, for example?
So the hammer and the discus operate out of the same cage, so they're gonna be always joined together. And then the javelin, which is, if you look at the rendering right there, is actually next to the middle school. They don't necessarily have to be next to each other. But again, the more, the area, closer you get things here, the much easier it's to manage your and track meets or other things of that nature because wherever you want to put that javelin, you're gonna now have to put some adult supervision in and not too many other places because of where the vector lines have to go. When we looked at this and walked the facilities, you have a lot of other complications because you've got a lot of things all over our grounds out there that prohibit us from putting a full javelin throwing area. all over our grounds out there that prohibit us from putting a full javelin throwing area in, in a runway for.
Yeah, just to speak to that, I mean, they don't necess, they don't necessarily have to be together. As Mr. Tech said, the challenge is is that both of them take up a fair amount of land when you're throwing. So it's not an insignificant portion of land that that these areas take up.
You mentioned before a phase in approach. How long ago, what was the start date of this? Like, we want this eventually. How long ago was this? And where did you think you were going to put that years ago when you had this phase in approach? You know, I'm trying to ask.
Yeah, originally it was that space between the middle and the high school. But again, it wasn't going to quite work out. So we got a, an initial price at an initial look at it. And it was, where you see the javelin area right now, looking at doing it in that middle space, which still overlaps the softball field.
I get we want to share. I totally understand that and I'm sympathetic towards, let's keep giving these kids what we can give them. But when I'm looking at this and track and field have a 2:30 to 4:30 practice, what maintenance person is going to be out there at 4:30 filling divots for my girls to get the field at 4:30? And making sure that is safe. Because if you cannot supply the staff to go out there for a solid half hour, now we're taking away thirty minutes of their practice time to the daylight. Who's going to be out there filling those divots and making sure it's safe for either the middle school girls or the varsity girls? Because if you can't supply that, you're now pushing us off the field. And Pat Down Memorial Field will not be here anymore. And so the fence, like, I don't even like, the fences. I don't know, I'm, I'm very disappointed that if this was a phase in approach. Space is safe. It's not like in five years we can create more space. I, I want, I don't want to assume because I understand. But where did we think we were going to put this before? Like, we built the middle school years ago. And we knew we wanted this. So I'm just kind of confused of where we thought, we kind of knew this. As a school committee possibly, as a town or back channeling, I'm not sure. And I don't want to assume. I'm just very disheartening where staff is hard, buses are hard, everything is hard. I'm an administrator as well. I get it. And I fight for every kid in my own school district and I'm fighting for every kid here. I don't see how this is going to work because you're pushing softball off of the process. That's, that's what I see right there. So.
Can you speak into the microphone? I don't know if we can hear you. Have you looked at grading to actually construct what you have laid out on this rendering? Is this a rendering?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, we walked the entire site. We looked at grading and actually the, the, these are the relatively only flat areas on the side. To get on the upper side, when you get towards the baseball field, it starts to slope up in those areas. And so that's why we can't push things more to the north of this page. Or really considered east because that slope starts to slope up on that side.
I'm just curious if you have a plan that we could see, an actual plan as opposed to a rendering? Show the grades and what you're looking at. I'd like to see the different options you came up with too. Just to see what does it work as opposed to why you came up with this actual decision to put it here?
All right, it's up to the school committee. I mean, I'm more than happy to share those, but.
Let, let us talk about this for.
I, I just think we need to have all the information before you actually make a decision. That's, that's my personal thing. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to come back, have to come back with other alternatives. You know, I, I unfortunately don't believe that we can. You know, my, my main concern would be the divots in the field. So I mean, I, I don't know how we get by that. Can we, can we look at, and I know we don't even own it, the place across the street?
That was the thing I didn't want to say out loud.
Okay.
But go ahead, you're the chair. Say that out loud.
I'm the one who puts their, with their foot in their mouth, right?
So maybe we can, I mean, does anybody? Debated, I guess.
I don't want to debate it, but I have to say, I would just like to add from an equity perspective that I feel like, you know, I remember the middle school softball field. It wasn't great to begin with, and it hasn't gotten the resources that it needed over the years. And there has been a strong program there. A few years it's taken a hit. But you know, I, I feel like we have to look at every single field in an equal way and every sport in an equal way. And to give it all the rest of that as well. But I feel like we should be looking at everything with an equity lens right now. And this doesn't feel like what an equity lens for me.
I appreciate we need to find, we, we do need to find some different alternatives. It's just, you know, the rendering I'm seeing and I am not an architect, so I maybe don't understand, but it just, it looks like it's, it looks like it's going to be set up to beat up the softball field. I can't count it's that, and I have a personal stake in this too. I mean, I do, I'm being partially selfish, I guess. My family, my in-laws have a lot of history of softball program. He'd been doing softball for a while. My wife is Brittany Savard, so she had a lot of love for the softball program. My daughter is already more athletic than I am, and I'm sure she will be participating in softball in the future. So, you know, I definitely want to make sure that we're preserving that program. But also, somebody said something that really stuck with me, which is we don't want to degrade. We don't want to degrade one program while we're trying to increase another. And I feel like, you know, unfortunately, this is doing that. We're gonna have to take a step back, or you have a public meeting about it with more information. Have Mr. CP here to talk about how we might be able to manage the the maintenance of the field, if there are, no matter where. Just like, maybe we just need a general state of the athletic fields meeting, just to talk about all the different programs, get everyone on the same page.
I would like to add that I, I agree with what you have said and what Mrs. Vada had said. But I also heard today from the boys' baseball coach. And they're concerned as well with so many teams trying to use limited spaces. And so they have the same issues, softball people, with schedules and field availabilities and field conditions. So I think we have to keep that in our, in the, in our minds, in the mix as well.
Mr. Chair, I have, I have a question for Matt, Mr. Tech, if that's okay. Mr. Tech, I do want to ask, because we talked about the Meadows. Is that the field like on the, is that still the field on the Blackstone, North Smithfield line? That's the one?
Correct.
And I might miss something. What is, what options would we have with that? Is that, that's a town field or not?
Correct. The Meadows was, was run by the town or was run by the town. I don't know if they're still in possession.
Yeah, so is that an option for either softball or the chat? I mean, I know, I knew you talked about that. We can't do it because of a cage as far as the throwing would go. Is that correct?
So again, when we use the word options, I guess anything is an option, but we were talking about putting ourselves right next to a transfer station in that kind of area. When we bus the kids over there, it's a little different than what we're providing on, let's say, this side of the town. So to speak. I mean, you could do it, but again, I think it still runs into that whole concept of you do need to find a way to alleviate some of the usage right now. And, and I know this will almost sound hypocritical in a way when I say this, but I also believe at some point we got too big for ourselves here in North Smithfield with the amount of programs we're running. We run the same amount of programs as almost every single large city school in the state of Rhode Island. And we are only four sports short of offering every single sport in the round in Scholastic League. So when we, you know, again, that was a committee's decision years ago to add track and field. We started adding those things on. It was always going to be at where are we going to put everything? Because we didn't expand our field space. We still had what we had. But all of a suddenly, we started adding the programs on. And it's great to have the kids have as many opportunities as possible. But how do we maintain that kind of equity fairness and supply all of the needs and wants of each and every one of these programs right now? And I see that we're kind of in this, you know, quandary now of trying to solve this problem. And there's no real good answer to it. I, I mean, that's the real fact we're facing tonight. There's no real good answer to it. So again, depends on ultimately the goal of what the committee and the community want to do. And if your goal is to ever host track meets or whatever, you're gonna have to look for something more in this general area because you wouldn't have the running events are going and then say, well, we got to bus across the other side of town and go through the shot foot and, and discus over there and have buses going up and down these roads and shuttling kids because you're gonna have a kid who throws the discus and hammer and he runs the four by one relay. And how would you get the four by one relay over here and then run across all the way down? Wait a minute, we'll be there in fifteen minutes. Like, you're not going to be able to do that. So from a feasibility standpoint, that's something that has to be considered. But I do recognize what the concerns are with the softball program. I, I do recognize that as well too. So I don't think this is a real soluble answer tonight to that situation.
I have one follow-up question, Mr. Chair. That's okay. Matt, Mr. Tech, have, is any, any room at the NSCS, like behind NSCS anywhere? Is that looking at all or?
I know there's some wetlands and different areas at NSCS. And again, I think it could be looked at because you do have some fields there, but I think we'll run into the exact same situation we're running here as NSYSA and some of those groups will start to say, well, now, I mean, we've, you know, they've been very helpful to us this year with the turf field being offline. They let us use their fields, but that's been a, a, a traffic nightmare up there as far as scheduling our middle school, high school soccer teams and the youth programs in the town as well too. So I can't speak to NSCS as well as their facilities up there, but I do know there's some wetland concerns up there.
And, and my last question, Mr. Tech, if I, if you missed you. Let's say we, let's say we went with the plan. What would there, I mean, do we have a plan for the, the divots select? Because I mean, I think that is my biggest concern is too, is the divots. I think we can live with the portable fence, but the divots does them to be a, how could we deal with that?
So, and so again, and that's why I made sure we brought that point up tonight. I, I actually would defer that more to facilities. That's definitely a question more for Alan because probably he has the grounds crew and he would be able to speak more intelligently to how would we be addressing the divots. I just wanted to make it known that knowing that when we're throwing a hammer which is weighted, that there's a possibility for those divots to occur out there. And that would be something that the committee and the facilities department would have to consider.
Thank you. So I mean, I think I speak for all of us. I think that we need to go back to the drawing board and figure out if any other places is an option. Beg people to give us land.
You mean that piece of land across the street with that has, with the, 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 the trees are being cleared and the logs are piled up, that, that piece of land?
And ask them to grade it for us so that we don't come in with too much money. All right. So you want to make a motion to postpone this until a different plan comes back?
Oh, before we do, between you, Mr. Chair and Superintendent, is there a way that we can figure out some sort of communication, a way to open up communication going forward?
Sure.
With the folks here that I think could really help, you know?
Right.
We want them to understand and we want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with the final decision?
I really would like to see a larger public meeting, if that's all right, Mr. Chair, because I think, you know, I, I certainly got a lot of calls today from families who felt a little flat, flat-footed because they said, well, I didn't know this was coming up. And I think it'd be really good for us to just, with everything that's been going on with COVID, our folks, there's so many academic pursuits, you know, we'll just take a look at how things are going with this part again back to normal.
And, and I feel communication is very, very important. And I think the coaches have to be involved with this so that they can share with, you know, the, the powers that be, so to speak, their concerns and should find out what the plan is and how it's going to impact their particular sport. So I think communication is critical.
No, it, it actually tonight was an introduction to the plan. It wasn't necessarily a vote, make it happen, encumber all the expense. You know, but I, I know people feel that maybe they were caught by surprise by this, but this was also part of introducing it to the school committee and to bring up the discussion and some of the pros and cons of this. So
I, I would just like to add to the committee. You guys brought up that very fact. I mean, we're just looking for transparency. We all want this to survive, to go through. We want all the athletics to be supportive. But myself as a coach, Mr. Hanwa is a baseball coach, Paul LaFave is a baseball coach. We basically were caught completely off guard. I mean, other, the only reason, the, the way the information came about to me was an off the off the hook comment that was made to me by someone, I'm not going to name who, but that was the first that I heard of it. And then it was relayed to me that this potentially was going to happen within the coming weeks. So if we didn't have, my question to the committee is, if you didn't have this support tonight, you definitely would have been further along in your agenda items. Would, how quickly would you have possibly moved on this and just stamped it and moved on? That's what everybody here is here for. We felt like there was not transparency. I know for a fact when I went on the school committee website, my wife went on the school committee website, this agenda item was stamped ten fifteen. We went on last night. It was not on there. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the North Smithfield population. I'm, I am not at all insulting anyone, but most people don't know that if it's not posted on the school committee website of their said respective town know enough to go research that information, that that information is in fact available on the Secretary of State's Open Meetings website. And it was posted there, but it wasn't posted on the school committee. And as a coach, I find that very disheartening. So going forward, I am happy and I, I, we are all in favor of all of you supporting us and not taking any action tonight and voting in favor of further discussion. But I believe that this, this particular agenda item needs to be researched more, needs to be debated more before any action is taken. No disrespect to the engineer, but all of us, we have a vested interest in the town. We understand the engineer is working on behalf of the school department, but the engineer, with all due respect, sir, you do not live in this town. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. There's a
Mr. Chair, can I just a comment on this? I mean, I, I have been a big track and field person all along, pushing, I think I made the motions, I think, you know, to get to both the end and the outdoor track going. And I do want to see us get to, you know, have these events because I know it's a problem that we can't post them right now. I did one more question for Mr. Tech if I may just before, I just, if that's acceptable. Actually, I'm not going to, I'll hold off on that right now. I'm wondering how many kids participate in track races, the softball, but at this point, I'm not going to worry about that. I just want to say that we do need to get access to a field, a throwing field. I'm wondering if there's something we can work out. I don't want to throw, just throw ideas out, but if Bryant's an option, you know, some kind of a you know, share with Bryant for Bryant University for some reason. I don't know if it's possible at this point, but I do want to get some type of throwing mechanisms in for the kids, for the track too. Because, again, we can't host the meets right now. And I think that when I did track and field many, many moons ago, we used, we didn't use school fields. We always used like town fields. And I was a student, we used McQuaid Stadium back when that was, we, we used those, I mean, we found options is what I'm saying. It wasn't on campus, but we found public options. Again, McQuaid Stadium was right there, so it's easy. But there's got to be, you know, something we can do here with another town or another. Again, I'm going to mention Bryant.
Thank you. Is there any further public or community comments?
There's nobody on Zoom, so.
Okay, we'll move on to the. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is for you. Does anybody wanna take anything off of consent agenda?
Could I ask you, just, just for the folks here, just to clarify, we're not taking any vote or action on the throwing field?
Correct.
Tonight, okay.
So on the consent agenda, is there any motions? So there's a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Superintendent, you wanna go to your report?
Yeah, and before I get into the, before I drop my coffee, I would just ask Suzanne Raffin to give an update on the special education program.
Evening. As you know, COVID and distance learning has been difficult for all of our students, but most especially difficult for our students with special needs. In recognizing the need for additional support, this summer, our ESY program was enhanced. We started by increasing the length of the day by an additional thirty minutes. Our program was also enhanced by additional offerings such as phys ed each day to encourage movement. We employed our school psychologists to run social skills groups with all classrooms, as well as providing any emotional support to individual students as needed. Many students also attended Camp Phoenix and our school psychologists provided support for an hour each day within the camp setting. We offered intense reading services in small groups with our reading specialists to assist in improving decoding and encoding skills. Our young adults in life skills also missed out on valuable job exploration. These students must reach a total of one hundred and twenty work sessions of field placement prior to exiting school. Taking that into consideration, we reached out to West Bay Collaborative and they were able to provide us with one-to-one job coaches during the summer months for a couple of the students that are due to exit soon. They had a wonderful experience, by the way. This new school year continues to bring with it many challenges for our students. Our collaboration and work with West Bay has continued in order to assist in completing the one hundred and twenty work sessions for students. We have also seen a deep need for additional support in the social emotional realm. We have reached out to Bradley and expanded our work together by increasing the support beyond just the partnership classroom to now include consultative services. This consultation will be a new endeavor for the partnership and we are excited about our alliance. They will be able to meet and consult for up to fourteen hours, I'm sorry, four hours monthly with our clinicians to brainstorm and offer strategies to better support our students that are in crisis. For our ninth and tenth grade students with IEPs at high school, we were offered an opportunity to participate in a work readiness training class that would focus on pre-employment skills. Special education teachers at North Smithfield High School are partnering with Work Opportunities Unlimited and our vocational counselor from the Office of Rehab Services to start the discussion of developing that post-secondary vocational planning goals for our ninth and tenth grade students. It will be a classroom program held during the school day once a week for approximately twenty weeks. The intent of the service is to provide a foundation to work and employment in general while specifically discussing career planning, self advocacy, searching for jobs, job applications, resumes, interviewing, professional communication, and maintaining successful employment. The goals for the program offer our students to develop an awareness of their short versus long-term career goals, to practice examples of professionalism in the workplace, to understand steps required to obtain and maintain a paid work position and to better prepare the students for following vocational experiences through ORS. An informational session was held last Wednesday on the thirteenth for parents and students. And currently intake meetings are being scheduled with students and parents and the class will begin once the meetings have been completed. Much thanks to all of our high school specialist teachers involved and especially to Christine Welch for her many hours of planning. These are only a few of the many creative ways we as a district meet our students' needs. In closing, I do need to take a few minutes to brag about how great our specialist teachers and support staff are. They work tirelessly and sometimes without notice. They have developed and created these numerous opportunities for our IEP students. Our preschool teachers have designed an integrated program where IEP students work side by side with their peers during academic and social activities. Our middle and high school transition teachers have instituted a mobile cafe where students prepare and deliver food items to faculty and staff across two buildings, as well as prepare and sell dog biscuits, very healthy ones, to the community. Our special educators at all levels have worked, have worked so hard to maintain a safe and nurturing classroom where students thrive. They never fail to amaze and humble me with the innovative ideas they bring to their classrooms. Our related service providers have also gone much above and beyond from going to students' homes to deliver food, to creatively providing speech and OT while wearing a mask and remaining in a pod. Our clinicians and counselors consistently provide only the best in emotional supports. Yes, these times have brought challenges, but our students have shown endurance and perseverance. They say it takes a village, that is very true of North Smithfield. But I would be remiss if I did not say, and I know it's going to be embarrassed, but I wanna say a huge thank you to Mr. St. Gene for always supporting our specialist programs and our students.
I'm gonna cut, I'm gonna cut your mic right now, I think you just got on too long.
I've got one more second. For understanding the importance of providing additional programming given this most difficult time. Thank you, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, so at this stage, what I'd like to do is go over and this is something we do at the beginning of every year, the goals for the coming year. So I'm just going to share my screen and hopefully I can do this quicker than I did last time, more efficiently. Screen, that one. Go. So every year, we, we come up with whether they're aspirational or things that we can accomplish, goals for the year and things we'd like to accomplish. And this year is no different. However, actually, you're gonna hear from Mrs. Claire Arnold, probably more so than me on this one, because we are able now to focus more on instruction as opposed to holding everything together during lockdowns and hybrid. And so everyone is in, Claire is happier, happiest I've seen her in the past year and a half. She is a ball of fire, she's in charge, she's, she's just zipping everywhere because it's all about teaching and learning this year. So our, our first set of goals really is around high standards, quality instruction and curriculum. So Claire, if you wanna. Oh, Matt turned it off on you.
I am much happier. I feel like, you know, we're not, we're talking about vaccination clinics less and we're talking about instruction much more. And so I'm thrilled about that. And so goal number one, it's high standards, quality curriculum, quality instruction curricula and then student success. And so we've come a long way even during a pandemic, which is actually pretty amazing when you think of what we've been doing. So when we, when we look at our curriculum and what we've done, we've updated our kindergarten through twelfth grade English Language Arts curriculum. And we now have full high quality in curriculum. We also have updated all of our math curriculum and that's K to twelve also. And so purchasing the curriculum is really just step one. The next step is implementing the curriculum, implementing it with fidelity, implementing it, having common planning time to talk about what we're doing and how we're doing. And so we are in the implementation phase of curriculum and that is really the most important part and having those conversations and those deep conversations. And so we're well, we're well into it. We are looking at possibly using ESR funds to support some science curriculum in the future. And we're just looking at right now, middle school science curriculum six through, six through eight. And the reason we're looking at only middle school at this point is that's the only curriculum that is deemed high quality. So we can't necessarily look at anything K to five just yet. We do have the law that passed a few years ago that we have to have K to twelve, high quality instructional programs. As you are well aware, if you've been funding them. But we've also received some funds, if you remember, for our ELA program at the high school from the CLSD grant. So that was a hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant. It purchased the materials, but it also purchased the professional development and that's a multi-year grant. So we're in year two of that grant, but I think it's three or four years with the implementation. And that was grant funded. And so if we're coming along, we have, for our ESR funds, we've been using our funds for some tutoring, class size reduction, math and ELA intervention and supports, summer enrichment, which Suzanne, Mrs. Raffin had spoken about for our special needs students, but also for all students that we have opportunities for, for students to come into the buildings this year, which was great. We have a focus on engaging our high, middle school and high school students. And it's already actually started, but parents and students will see, and the coming months will see even more, but we're offering quite a few more clubs. And that is to engage our students back into school after the, after the pandemic and just to name a few. And they haven't all started, but a few of them for the high school are disc golf, environmental club, treads and strength, booze ball, robotics, archery, fitness analytics, creative writing, knitting, prochaying. So really quite the variety. And so that's going to be coming out throughout the year. And the middle school will be offering clubs also. And it's really to get our students in, our teachers are facilitating the clubs, it's grant funded and we're thrilled about that initiative. We also have one of our initiatives this year is implementing interim assessments. And that is really something that from the Rhode Island Department of Ed, we received a grant and we purchased, they're called iReady, it's the platform. But their assessment's aligned to our, our standards throughout the school year. So we can analyze our data during common planning time and, you know, use the data to inform our instruction and make sure we're on target. And so we're, we're starting in with that. We're implementing our district, district-wide professional development focusing on achievement gaps. And that will start in October. And we're looking at our data and where our students are falling short and then making plans to, to fill those gaps. And we're beginning to implement our district literacy plan for the science of reading professional development. And that was also legislation that had passed. And so all of our teachers, every teacher has to have some type of training. Some teachers require much more than others, up to sixty to eighty hours worth of training in the science of reading. So if you're a special education teacher, elementary teacher, you would require much more. But every teacher, you could be a high school physics teacher and you need to still have about ten hours of training. So we're facilitating that. And we have, we, we, we've started on it and we have a pretty good plan going forward. So I'm pretty impressed with what, with what we've been able to do during, during these challenging times. And I, like Suzanne, just wanna, you know, make mention of our, our teachers, our students that have really stepped up over the last year, year and a half. And our teachers that are embracing a lot of these new programs and challenges. And our administration and Mr. St. Gene is incredibly supportive. So I appreciate that, although he hates those comments. But I do appreciate that and I appreciate the school committee, because you've supported us every step of the way as we tried to expand programs, especially with math intervention supports and curriculum programs. So I thank you also, but we are well on our way. Good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so you thought you were done, now you're going to hear from me for a little bit. But it will be much quicker and far less articulate than what you just heard. So our, our second goal is around safe and supportive school. And one of the things that we have been and will be using the ESR funds is to ramp up more social emotional support for the students. Mr. McGee was instrumental in securing a high school substance abuse counselor for the high school. And unfortunately, she has had things to do. But throughout, we're looking at, just, just as we have additional after-school programs and clubs and activities to engage students socially, we also need more resources and wraparound services for the social and emotional and the psychological supports. And so we're, we're building those in on top of the substantial amount of supports that we already offer. For our staff, and again, I hate to say, you know, in, in speaking of social emotional supports, our, our third standard is around quality staff. And one of the things that we discussed last month, last month, and the recommendation coming forward for this month is the Employee Assistance Program, which gives confidential counseling on a number of issues to all district employees. Now, our union, both of our unions, they took a look at the, the information that was shared last, last month. They went onto the website, they took a look at the resources available and they've come back unanimously, please, you know, let's, let's go ahead with this. So in supporting, that's just another way that we can support our staff. Because just as during the past year, year and a half, our students have found some strengths and struggles, so have our employees and staff. So as we support our students, we wanna support our staff. The other big thing this year was the common planning time. Every morning, forty-five minutes before the students arrive, our staff is, our teachers are here. And they are doing planning meetings, they're doing curriculum development, they are deep diving into instruction. And the conversations, and again, Claire over here, she comes back from the morning common planning times and she's just on fire and she's just telling me all the amazing things that the teachers are talking about and saying and doing and how excited she is, which is marvelous, because it counters my emails and everything else I'm dealing with. So fantastic, just could not be more pleased with the staff development this year. The next standard on community and communication and community engagement is one of the things that we started before COVID and then COVID kind of backed off, but now we're bringing back in, is to engage more community partners. So we have a local studio now, which is doing a girl's self-defense class after school in our own buildings. We've had some really good partnerships with the North Smithfield Heritage Association, with the North Smithfield Library. We're just looking for more of these partnerships to enrich North Smithfield, connect North Smithfield and bring the, the amazing resources this town has to bear into our schools. And then finally, the, the last section is on effective, efficient operation of facilities. So one of the key goals last year and this year is that any kind of COVID funds that we have that are made available, aren't just for COVID-related issues. These are things that are longstanding, that will benefit us long after COVID has passed. We continue with in-house renovations. I've shared some pictures of renovated science labs, renovated classrooms up on Facebook. Mr. Seaton and his team right now are creating a green room and media studio for the high school to, to do video and audio production. And bit by bit, we're taking that fifty-year-old building at the high school, modernizing it and making it something amazing that people are proud of and, and to walk through. and making it, uh, something amazing that people are proud of and, and, and to walk through. As we said, we, the big can that we've been kicking down the road for year after year is finally replacing the, uh, track and the, uh, the turf field. And again, let me tell you, what is going in is incredible quality. Uh, unfortunately, due to, you know, global supply chain limits, we're, we're behind schedule where we thought we would be. But, you know, the, the, the work is happening. It's going to be top quality, we anticipate. Thanksgiving football game being played on the new, uh, the new field. And, uh, it's, it's going to look spectacular. We're also continuing and we're hoping to maybe use some of the E S R funds to finish up replacing the fifty-year-old windows at the high school and get that project out of the way. But even with that, we still have about, uh, two million dollars worth of pre-approved projects that the, uh, that we can get reimbursed for under warm, safe and dry with the Department of Ed and the School Building Authority. So again, we're just trying to find resources and move things around so that we can make these improvements, these renovations and do it in such a way that we can get reimbursements, which we can then turn around and further invest and renovate. The new employee handbook, uh, we, we, we put that out and that, that was something that, uh, again, just to give us, tighter protocols and consistency between the schools and among the staff. And then I have to say, I hate this project and I use COVID as an excuse not to do it. But because we're moving forward in so many ways, I have to really tackle our school committee policies. Uh, we have many policies that are in need of updating and refreshing. So that's essential and my goals for this year. Everything will be done. It will be perfect. And, uh, you will be absolutely amazed at the outcomes.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do we have any questions?
No.
Moving on to, uh, informational portion, uh, item number four. Does anybody have any questions? Again, this for informational purposes. Uh, moving on to all business, item number five. One, this is discussion regarding implementation and use of the E A, that E A P among unions in response from unions. Um, Superintendent, I think that you've covered that. This would be for all employees, right?
Absolutely. Yes.
So does anyone want to make a motion on this? So motion to approve the superintendent to move forward on the E A P program as presented last meeting.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard this.
So Jones made the motion.
Sorry. I thought I heard.
Mrs. Mayo, second. Uh, any discussion?
I think it's a good program.
Yeah. I'm so happy to hear that both, oh, that both, um, unions were, were pleased with it because I think it offers a lot of benefits for relatively short money. So I think that's great.
Yep.
Great.
And it covers support staff too, right? It covers everybody.
Everybody. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. All right, it's your. Yeah, so, uh, do we have anything to update us on either the fiscal twenty-one or twenty-two budget? Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Great. We're going to go to executive session now.
Want a motion, Superintendent?
Yeah, I want to take a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law's forty-two, forty-six, five A.
Don't move.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
And second.
All right. So for the folks watching on.
Roll, I need to roll call it. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
We're in executive session.
Okay, so for the folks, uh, on Zoom, what I'm going to be doing is I'm pausing this recording and I'm going to be shutting off the camera and the microphone. And we will resume, I'll resume the recording and the audio and video once we return from executive session.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, exit executive session. Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Uh, I'll entertain a motion to seal the record.
Don't move.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. For the record, no votes were taken. Okay, and I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, the superintendent's evaluation is outlined in the executive session. Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to approve the emergency response plan for twenty-one, twenty-two school year as outlined in executive session.
Don't move.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any further business? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. We're adjourned.